Can we please start to take our seats? We'll be beginning here in just a moment.
All right, Mr. Bassett, thank you for letting us break for just a minute.
Oh, no problem. So I'm gonna be here and then Brian, when he joins, he'll be at the podium. So, we have a lot to talk about, but we will try to be brief. So we're gonna spend a little bit of time going through the recommendations from the School Finance Commission, give you a brief legislative update, and then Brian and Luis will talk about the current financial outlook, and I'll wrap things up with a discussion about debt service. So this was the cover of the report that was issued at the end of December. The Texas Commission on Public School Finance, it did address a lot of the governor's goals with the guard outcomes-based funding and innovative methods. And a lot of information, I think overall, much more was produced from this than what was originally expected. Outcomes-based funding, some of the items on here, apologize for the duplication, but one of the things that's more controversial in here is having outcomes-based funding based on third grade tests. And so there's just been a lot of discussion that I've seen at the Public Education Committee and other discussions within Texas School Alliance with speakers that come in and talk about what the commission was thinking along these lines. So we'll have to see what happens. Another one of the more controversial items is the 100 million that would go up by 100 million each year to eventually get to the point where there's a billion dollars' worth of funding for educator effectiveness allotment. This is the allotment where they want to try to get up to the point where the best teachers are making over 100,000. So that was the purpose of this line item. Some of the new proposed-based funding, so I think all of these are good things and they're all needed. I mean, hopefully with what we're doing in the Early Literacy Center, we'll qualify for some of these new allotments to help with third grade reading, dual language, we've talked about, dyslexia is long overdue. You can see some of the others there. So there is proposed new fundings. The issues that we really have with it, though, is with regard to the reallocations. I've bolded the cost of education and I'll spend some time on that separately, but the cost of education index overall is worth 2.9 billion dollars in the current system, the way it stands now. There's some stuff in there to help just clean up the formula and simplify it. They still expect spending on gifted and talented, for example, but the reason why that's in here is because every school district gets 5%. And so they just want to roll that money into the basic allotment, and it's similar with the high school allotment. The move from current year values, from prior year values, excuse me, to current year values, which, you've heard me talk about the lag whenever our property value is going up at a different rate than what the state has deemed. That causes issues, but this one has already been taken off the table because of some of the mechanics associated with moving to current year values. And that was a recent development. So some of the things that they want to do is they do want to increase the weights for comp ed funding. I mean, I think that's long overdue. I think everybody agrees with that. How exactly they're gonna do that, I mean, they've talked about, you know, I've seen things on a per-campus basis and then also on a district-wide basis, the way it's done now. You can see some of the others in here. You know, they do want to totally fund the new instructional facilities allotment, which is something we suffer from this past biennium, the current year, because they didn't totally fund what they had in there for NIFA. Some of the other more notable items on here is increasing the copper yield, the yield of the copper pennies, which unless we make a change in our tax rate, really doesn't mean anything to us. Remember, if we have a TRE, we would have some amount of recapture because the copper penny yield is at 31.95. And so they're talking about increasing that yield. So most school districts wouldn't have recapture on their copper pennies. But then, on the other hand, they want to reduce the value of the golden pennies and decouple it from the Austin yield. So anyway, I can see people shaking their heads already over all this detail here. So sorry about that. But anyway, getting to the punchline here, you know, what they want to do is, you know, they got 1.8 slated for outcomes-based funding, new funding components of 2.5 billion, but the reallocations, you know, over a biennium of 8.8 billion. Again, the cost of education index is the biggest item in there, and so that'll have a big impact on us. And then the property tax relief, you know, is definitely the unknown. I mean, the Legislative Budget Board just put out a publication, just a brief publication, just affirming that they were not able to calculate the potential impact of the 2.5% cap on school districts because what the state's gonna make up and how that's gonna be calculated is yet to be determined. They did calculate what it would cost cities and counties and special districts. So there was a big photo opera January 8th, the big three there. You have the Lieutenant Governor, Governor, and the House Speaker, you know, claiming to be on the same page with regard to school finance and property tax reform. And so, you know, that's good. I mean, we definitely have a lot of additional revenue out there that could be allocated to state funding. But what it means to us, there are potential for big wins for us, but also potential for big losses. Some of the scenarios you've seen or we've seen will cost us tens of millions and others could add tens of millions. And so I've honestly have never been in a legislative session since I've been paying attention to this since 2003 that has this much uncertainty, given everything that's on the table right now. So this is a very good picture on where does this leave us. And we're gonna be paying close attention. I'm actually gonna be leaving after this briefing to go to Austin for early meeting tomorrow. And, you know, for the, I guess, every week, I'm gonna be there for some reason or another. So talking about some of our primary areas of concern. So the CEI is the number-one issue, and this is what I spoke about at the House Public Education Committee last week. The complaint is that it's been so long since it's been updated, and that's true. It's been forever since it's been updated, and it hasn't been updated mainly for political reasons, but it does provide adjustments for regional cost differences. And there certainly are, you know, everybody knows that it costs more to live here than it does in, say, Muleshoe or, you know, some of these others. And you have major differences between, even within, areas of a metro area. And so the Cost of Education Index helps recognize that. If you take the CEI out of the formula and make no other changes to current law, now, there's gonna be changes, but if you make no other changes, we would lose $56 million if the CEI went away, and that's per year. Okay? Now, obviously, that's a big number. We calculated that the basic allotment would need to go up $584 just for us to break even. Also, one thing that we've calculated in going through this, because we pay, the CEI is actually part of the formula to determine how much districts pay to TRS for the salaries above the statutory minimum, our contribution would be 2 million. Statewide, we've calculated recently, working with CFOs, M.O. Casey, that that statewide amount's closer to $100 million, which that was an unintended consequence of the CEI potentially going away. You know, they plan on having that, you know, they plan on making that up by the comp ed amount going up. And so there are some districts with a high CEI that will benefit from the comp ed amount going up, but whether or not it totally replaces the CEI, I don't see happening for Fort Bend, especially because our number's just as high as it is. I mean, when I said that to Chairman Huberty last week, he just said, "Well, how do you know?" And I said, "Well, I don't know for sure, but the math that I've seen, it just doesn't add up." The property value cap of the 2.5%, this is the first time I've seen this. I mean, I don't know if it's unprecedented, but to have a bill of this magnitude filed by both chambers at the same time that's identical, certainly doesn't happen often. You know, so it does show that there's some solidarity between the two chambers. We testified on this bill because we just didn't know, we still don't know, the impact. The good news is that whenever I was at a meeting last week when the governor's office was talking about some of this, I think that debt service will be excluded. But we've left it on here because we don't know for sure until we see some of the final bills with regard to the school finance. But again, how all this takes place and how the state will make up the difference is yet to be determined. There's been a lot of press about the mandatory teacher raises. And I think everybody agreed that, you know, all of our teachers deserve a raise. So we showed you some of the numbers on the side there. We have 47 50 full-time teachers. The total salary increase there is, you know, it's 23.7 million. That's about an 8.5% average pay increase. And so why is that important? Well, we always have to look at the other employees because we have thousands of other employees. It's interesting that this is the first time, I've seen two mandatory raises for teachers since I've been involved in school finance. This is the first time that I've actually seen this not count nurses, counselors, and librarians. And so that's just, I thought it was very interesting. If we were to give them the same increase, you know, based on the scale and everything else, it would be another 1.7 for us. And then if we were gonna give the rest of our employees half of that percentage amount, I mean, we had to pick some number for the purposes of this exercise. If we did half of that, it would cost an additional 7 million. Another one of the bills filed recently would have an increase in TRS contributions. This would certainly be an unfunded mandate. I mean, I don't think anybody in employee, in education would argue that you definitely want TRS to be whole. And so, but for the district to make it up without any kind of increases from the state, that's where this would be. So by the time we get out to 25, that ongoing impact would be 2.5 million. I've sent you some separate information on the equal and uniform statutes and some of the things that we're trying to promote so that we could potentially have additional revenue in future sessions. So I don't want to spend too much time on this because it's not really gonna impact us this time. But the equal and uniform statutes, we want to try to get mandatory sale disclosure and try to help with comparability. But then, really, the whole purpose of that is for any increases of recapture to go back into the basic allotment. So the bottom line, I think the one thing that is certainly good news is that the governor has said that the property tax and school finance are emergency items. And so that means that they can pass bills prior to the 60th day of the session. Usually you have to wait. And so hopefully we'll know our fate sooner than later, so we'll be able to react to it. And so, you know, we got Brian's Latin there on murky ambiguity, but really, we just have all kinds of uncertainty facing us more than ever before. So with that, I'll let Brian come on up and start talking about how we expect to end the year.
Good evening, members of the board.
Mr. DePree.
I'd like to begin with discussing the 2018-19 year-end estimates, and this is where there is some optimistic news in spite of all the uncertainty that we're seeing at the state level. We are expecting to end the current fiscal year essentially where we projected the budget to be. So we're looking at drawing down our fund balance by about $5.94 million. We had projected it to be at $5.86 million. However, that still leaves us with a very strong fund balance and having 97 days of operating reserve when we go into next year. I mention this because as I go through the slides, I'm going to share with you some expenditures that we have that we anticipate we would be baking into the year-end estimates as we go forward. Those numbers that I share with you are included in this number, so everything that you see going forward is captured in this number that you see in front of you. So the items that you see at the top are items previously approved by the board, so I won't go into any detail on those. However, we do have a number of potential adjustments that we would be looking at for year-end on our revenue side. Some of those include the collections on frozen values of about $5.3 million, an increase in the CPDD audit, that's one-time money, higher interest income because of the increase in the rates, higher Shar's revenues, and then finally, an increase in state revenue due to our higher sped numbers in terms of enrollment, or in terms of special education students being a percentage of the enrollment. On the expenditure side, you see the approved adjustments in front of you. There are two areas where we're looking to see this evening where you would be taking action on those that would be considered approved if the board chooses to move those forward. And those are the special education positions that we have, as well as the PBIS and campus support positions. You may recall back in December, the board voted to approve those positions. So this actually incorporates the funding associated with those positions so that it is a budgeted item. The two other, or three other items that would be potentially adjusted that I mentioned earlier that are included in the numbers that you saw, additional teacher additions that are enrollment-driven, increasing the electric forecast. You may recall that the board agreed to a contract with a performance-based company to help lower electric rates. When they did their initial projections, it was based on our old utility rate. That number changed in January, so we're expecting some higher costs related to that, or I should say, the costs not quite being what we expected. And then finally, there are some maintenance-related items in our facilities area where we could see a need to adjustment. This is something Steve mentioned last week. And some of those items, we're currently examining the list, may qualify for the major maintenance. And you may recall, that's money that we set aside each year in fund balance to address any unforeseen items. So we may be coming back to the board requesting utilization of those funds. So essentially, at the short end of, I'm gonna go backwards for a second before I turn it back over to Luis. The items that were shown as not, having had board action on them, are included in this year-end projection. So when you see the 97 days operating reserve there that we're anticipating at year-end, this does include those items. And with that, I will turn it over to Luis. And I don't believe you all have actually heard from Luis. Luis is the Director of Budget. When I promoted him to Dina's position as Executive Director, he was our Senior Budget Analyst, and he promoted him to the Budget Director position. So you all be gentle with him. This is his first time in front of the board.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. DePree. In this portion of the presentation, I'll be walking you through what we predict 2019-20 fiscal year will look like. I would like to point out that some of the estimates you will see tonight are still being refined. Some of the estimates are costed assuming maximum financial impact and may change as we move forward through the budget cycle process and more information becomes available. So on February 1st, we met with the Chief Appraiser and his staff to discuss preliminary property value for 1920. And the initial estimate on net taxable property value that we calculated from this preliminary reports is 37 billion. This effectively represents a 5% growth over the 2018 certified property values. Some of the factors that are expected to have an impact on the final certified roll as we move forward to the certification process is the number of appraisals, review board protests filed by property owners, and the anticipated volume of over 65 and disabled person exemption filings that the CAT is expecting. Also, another information, on January 31st, the Controller's Property Tax Division published the preliminary 2018 CPDD value for Fort Bend. And the growth experienced by the CPDD in 2018 compared to prior year is 4.8%. In terms of the state aid formula, the 2018 CPDD value is used to calculate, or will be used to calculate, 2019-20 state revenue. As Steve was mentioning, it's a lagging measure that is built in or utilizing the state formula to calculate the revenue. When we look at the change in net certified value, we can see slight increase from 2018, from 4.2, to what we're predicting being a 5% growth. And since the prior year CPDD and the expected forecast property value growth are almost at parity, so growth is at 5%, CPDD 4.8%. So the fact that they're so close, we're projecting that the lagging effect of the CPDD is not gonna have, or cause a major variation on state funding. So the fact they're almost at parity is gonna have a neutralizing effect on that clawback from the calculation on the state revenue. As you might hear in more detail from our demographic first presentation tonight, student enrollment continues to increase year over year. With more than 77,000 students expected to attend Fort Bend schools in 1920, we're expecting the revenue and expenses also to exhibit similar upward slopes on their projections. Another aspect of enrollment that we have been monitoring closely is the district special education population that has experienced accelerated growth starting in 2016-17 and mainly due because of the corrective action that the state put in place after an audit from the Department of Education, or the U.S. Department of Education. So from 2011, and to put in perspective, through 2016, the average number of students receiving special education services, average, we added about 86 students per year. From 2017 through projected 2019, the average number of additional students receiving special education services is 680 per year. The proportion of special education students as a percentage of the total enrollment increased from 6.9% in 2016-17 to 8.8% in 2018-19. So the special education population, we're estimating, and after working with the Executive Director of Special Education, the estimate is to reach about 10% for 2019-20 and continue to grow about 1% thereafter for the following years. The anticipated financial impact over the three-year horizon is around 29.5 million. So as we work in building our budget forecast for the revenue side of the equation, we're considering the following assumptions. So the color coding goes from the darker green is high degree of certainty, light green, it's a, you know, like a moderately high degree of certainty, and then the yellow is a moderate degree of certainty. So we have, we're building into our forecast a property value growth of 5%, $10 increase per Austin yield. CPDD, we know now that the Controller's have published that number. Average daily attendance of 76,249 students. An average daily attendance of 96.5%. Free and reduced count of 33,000 students, that's roughly 44% of our student population. Weighted average daily attendance growth is 2.62%. And as I mentioned before, special education student enrollment being at 10% of total enrollment with 7,723 students projected. As far as the puzzle for the expenditure side, some of the puzzle pieces include the new teaching based on staffing projections. So we're currently working on the staffing allocation for campuses, and that will determine the number of teachers and other personnel support staff for campuses that is gonna be required for 1920. Adjustment to facility and IT allocations, there's a, with increased enrollment, with the per-person allocations that we do for campus budgets, we're experiencing a certain degree of growth there, too. 2018-19 staff investments, PBIS, threat assessment, sped, and campus support. So even though these were approved in 1819, we're gonna see, and we're including the full effect of the cost because we depraded 1819, and we're gonna see the full financial impact of the PBIS threat assessment and all the investments in additional staffing. We have opening the CT center, the staff requiring the MNO for the re-center. We're including also on the projections and the income statement that you're about to see, we have built in a 2% total salary adjustment for teachers. This includes the step and also a portion up to 2% on the teacher compensation adjustment. And we also included a 2% raise on non-teaching personnel. We have calendar changes. We're including an additional health fund contribution for each year and special education staffing additions to support the continued growth. And we have known unknowns and unknown unknowns. This is Brian's two pieces of the puzzle. But it's basically, you know, like the information that at this point, we know, you know, for example, the $5,000 teacher raise, that's a known unknown because there's a lot of, you know, variability that comes with it. And also, some other things that we are not seeing at this point, but we might see by the end of the legislative session. So some of the strategic priorities undergoing final budgetary work at this point include the early college high school at Marshall, Willow Ridge, and Hightower, the early literacy center expansion, and other staffing requests and stipend reclassification and adjustments. So these are ongoing work items that we're finalizing, attaching a cost to it. So as you can see, 2018-19 year-end is what Brian mentioned. We're at 97 days for reserve. In 2019-20, the total projected revenues are 665 million, and the total expenditure is 680 million. With the contribution of the $2 million from the transfer in from the extended learning, we're projecting the use of economic stabilization for 12.5 million. So that would effectively produce a fund balance ending of 183 million, and that's 87 days in reserve requirement. And as I mentioned earlier, there are two data points in here. The expected level expenditure that you see, the 680 million, the cost to buy down one day of reserve requirement is 1.9 million, just to put it in perspective. And as I mentioned earlier, we're still refining the estimates and will continue to work diligently on the preparation of the budget to align it to the board policy. So some of the upcoming actions, the items that we will be bringing forward for board consideration in March include the enrollment-driven staffing additions for classroom teachers, fine arts teachers, ESL teachers and aides, and special education teachers and aides. So this is strictly enrollment-driven positions. We will also bring the re-CTE center staffing item for your consideration as well. Other items that will be presented to the board for consideration in April-May timeframe, and this will largely depend on how the legislative session is going, is it non-teaching positions from other areas within the organization, and other compensation and stipend adjustments that we're, at this point, they're going under evaluation. So with that being said, thank you for your time, and I'll hand it over to Steve.
Thank you, Luis. Okay, so our last topic is on the debt service fund. So just remind everybody, you know, about the bond, 992 million. So just to remind everybody, you know, about the bond, 992 million. We had the planned tax rate increase of three pennies that we would not go above. And so this is the slide that we included in our presentation showing how we would, how and when we would get to the three pennies by 2021. So as we know, the, one of the biggest rocks in the, in the bond was the high school, and so right now that has an accelerated opening from 2024 to 2022. And so originally, you know, we had planned, you know, to put off issuing 181 million of debt, and so we will need to move that up. We think, though, that we can maintain, not go above the three penny tax rate increase overall, okay? But what it will take for us is to accelerate when we'll be recognizing those pennies. And so I'll show graph here in a second. One thing that we're going to also look at, but with the, with the mind of not doing anything to impact student achievement, is we may look at shifting some of the projects also further back, depending on what we have, the capacity organizationally to be able to continue to handle. And so we're, we're working on that. But this is what it would look like. I could see us taking two of the pennies this year with all three coming in in 2020. And I do think that that'll help us, and I still feel really good about not going above the three pennies in the future years, given the scenarios that we've seen. So, so I do think that's, that's the good news. So just to recap, uncertainty, uncertainty, you know, we've talked about everything going on there in the, in the 18, 19 year, the current year, good, good numbers overall. The property values for next year do look good, and so we talked about everything that was in the forecast. But again, we're trying to make sure we bring in something that, that meets the 90-day operating reserve requirement. And then here's just the, the graphic of everything that Luis had explained before. So we'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett, Mrs. James.
Thank you to that team for great presentation, and thanks for working hard to get it all together. My favorite slide was the known, the known unknowns and the unknown unknowns. That's my best, my favorite part. My question, I think, is to you, Mr. Bassett. It has to do with new revenue streams. You talked about all the new, new money, if you will, that legislature's been talking about, but have they identified new revenue streams? Or has there been any talk or anything proposed?
No, they have not identified anything new. I mean, but, you know, the comptroller has identified 8 billion more than what was in the previous biennium. You know, so there are, there are numbers out there. You know, the, it's unfortunate that the Senate budget is 3 billion less than the House budget, with the House budget being 3 billion more for education. And so, you know, we're going to have to have some kind of reconciliation between the two chambers there, but they have not identified, like, they're, that doesn't include any changes in sales taxes and what's, you know, those kinds of things. So nothing new has been identified yet.
Feel like I'm having dessert before I eat supper. Obscurous, ambiguous. Mr. Gwynn, you have surpassed Semper Gumby. And I wish I, I wish I could speak a deo at reggae, but alas and alack, I am a lowly school board trustee. A voice crying in the wilderness. I want to echo Mrs. James's comments, and I want everybody here to know a few things. When the, when the legislature put together this Texas Commission on School Finance, they soon divided into three subcommittees. One was on outcomes, one was on expenditures, and one was on revenue. So the outcomes and the expenditures group met repeatedly throughout the year, and the revenue group chaired by Senator Paul Bettencourt met one time for 15 minutes. So that's perhaps why we don't have a good, we don't have a very good handle on where we're coming, where we're coming from. And I recall a prior slide, Mr. Bassett, that indicated for the past 22 years, our property tax growth fell below 2.5%, two or three times. And all the rest of that time, it bounced between 4% and 11%. And so today, when I got on the school board, our, the split between the state and local participation, local was at 52%, and the state was at 48%. And today, we are at 70%, and the state is at 30%. And that is because they are addicted to property tax revenue, like a crack addict, and it's very difficult for them to find an alternative revenue stream. And although we have $8 billion more, we may not, that's because of probably oil prices, we may not have that in the next biennium. I was visiting with the lieutenant governor and with some of the other, my peers from Tazby, and he asked if we should give the teachers a raise of 5,000, what we thought about that. And I said, "Well, it's not a good idea unless it's sustainable. Who wants to get a $5,000 raise this year, and yet we're going to take it away from them next year because there's no money?" I think that's a bad idea. But our fund balance, that you're, we're making up 12.5 million dollars from the fund balance, is that right? And that's the MNO fund balance, and some of that is from savings when several years ago, we had an 11% growth in, we had three years of double-digit property tax growth, and we didn't spend all the money. But now we have, and if, if the property tax revenue is capped at 2.5%, the state is going to have to come up with new revenue, sustainable revenue, or else we're going to have to increase our maintenance and operating tax. And we'll probably have to do that. And when we talk about the revenue cap on the maintenance and operation, and whether or not we're going to have a revenue cap on debt service, in 2016, you went to see the comptroller, chief, chief appraiser for Fort Ben ISD CAD appraisal district, and we went from 11% in 2015, I think, to, it's initial comments where it's going to be kind of the same. You discounted that to be conservative, maybe you're in at 7 or 8%. And then we got a big surprise after we had already budgeted for teacher raises and so forth, when he said, "King's X." Did I say it was going to be the same? No, I didn't say that. It's going to be more like 3%, which is a big difference. And all of a sudden, we're going to have a budget shortfall, or else tell the teachers they can't have a raise. And so everybody likes to come here and say, "We just need one more police officer. We need one more janitor. We need one more this. We need one more that." Don't understand why we can't do that, because it's easy to spend other people's money. And even though we have a big budget, every cent has to be accounted for. Every cent. I was, I was with Mrs. James in Washington DC, talking to some members of Congress. They said, "Well, you know, Congress can't fix everything." And I said, "Well, that's true, but there's one thing we can do that Congress can't do." What's that? Passive balanced budget, because we're required to do that by law. So we solved our problem in 2016 by decreasing, we dropped our INS tax rate so we could swap it over to the MNO tax rate, and we took a pretty big gamble when we did that of getting in trouble with the Attorney General, but we did it anyway. And that yielded revenue that allowed us to give the teachers the raise we told them they were going to get, and we lowered the overall combined tax rate at the same time. Now, why can we do that with the debt service tax rate, and we can't do it with the MNO? Because there's no clawback on the MNO. There's no clawback. When our tax values go up on the MNO side, each year, the state looks back at that, and they say, "Wait, oh, your values went up 11%, and that was worth $20 million. We're getting ready to write you a check for our share. We're going to subtract $20 million." And every year, I get a chance to explain that to people who come here and complain why we never lower the tax rate, because the effective tax rate keeps going up. It's a built-in job. I get to explain it every single year because it's so difficult to understand. And yet, that doesn't happen to the cities and the counties, because they don't have a clawback, nor do we have a clawback on the debt service. So, and plus, school finance, it's only taken me eight and a half years to understand what I know, which is probably still not the whole thing. But it's a Byzantine veil, and we're in the harms way side of that veil, and the governor and lieutenant governor are on the safe side of that veil, because nobody can understand it. The average citizen, it's better than taking sleeping pills at night. If you can't sleep, just read our, our budget, and you will right to sleep. So I wanted to comment on the Cost of Education Index, and how, if they change that, and this is, this is where everything is up in the air. In 2005, Rick Perry compressed the tax rate from $1.50 to $1, a 33% reduction, a 30% reduction of 1,000 school districts in the state. But even he was smart enough to realize you had to have a compensating revenue stream, and we wound up with a business franchise tax, which has been dismantled over the last legislative session and this legislative session. So back then, when they did that, they knew what the revenue stream was going to be. They had a plan, and now we don't have a plan. So it's like saying, "Let's go, we're going to go buy a new house, even though we're really not sure what our salary's going to be for this year." It's pretty hard to come up with a budget in that way. And I want to talk about, well, I'm going to probably stop talking, because I'm mainly talking to myself. I love this picture on page nine of the governor, the lieutenant governor, and the Speaker of the House, when they, when they gazed longingly into each other's eyes, held hands, and saying kumbaya, and now we still have, we still don't know where we're going to get the revenue from. But thanks for working on it, and thanks for your comments about making sure we still have a 90-day, we have to have a 90-day, not 87-day, a 90-day fund balance. And, and as Luis pointed out, it's 1.9 million dollars per day, right? So 1.9, call it two, we need six, you got to get $6 million out of it. It's a lot of money, when you're, when 86% of our budget are salaries and benefits. And I see increased funding on our part for the teacher retirement system. You know, I was talking to Chris Barbick one time. He was, he used to be the director of Yes Prep, and he said, "Yeah, we burn our teachers out in four to five years. They come work for us, they're toast, they're fried after four to five years. We're always looking for new ones." But you know what? I think teaching is an honorable profession, and someone who is involved in teaching should expect to be able to one day retire with honor and dignity, and since they're not on the social security program, the TRS needs to be there for them. And now, I hope that the legislature is very careful when they come up with the new revenue stream, because when they constrain us like this, it really hampers our ability to meet our financial obligations, and there's a lot of unintended consequences that, that can come about. And I've lived through that before in 2010, when we had a $28 million shortfall, and so, well, we just laid off 400 teachers. And it wasn't much fun, and people came up to me and said, "Jim, can we have a bake sale? Can we have a car wash?" And I said, "Yeah, we can," but at that time, the annual electric bill was $15 million a year. So I said, "If we turn off the lights and air conditioning in every single building we have, we'll still be $13 million short. It's catastrophic when the number is that big, and your budget's 86% salaries and benefits. The only way you can get it in the budget is to cut staff." And here we are talking about adding staff to support our teachers, especially in our economically disadvantaged area, and they need, they need those additional staff members and counselors and teachers, because the, the social and physical and emotional needs of our, of those students consume those same capacities in our staff. And we're going to burn them out. We're going to burn them out if we, if we don't get them additional help. So I'm not a sanguine on the outcome of this, as you might be, but we have no choice but to smile and look as happy as we can as we move forward through this legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. Tosin.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, I will echo the comments of my colleague. We are in Austin quite a bit, talking to our legislators, and it can be difficult to navigate the various bills and positions and things that are upcoming. I want to thank you for going, because I've seen you coming and going and testifying and up there advocating on behalf of the students of Fort Ben ISD and really the entire state of Texas. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. It's important, and some people don't recognize how important it is, so I just want to say I appreciate it. So the Legislative Budget Board has also recommended that the legislature do away with the Equity and Uniform Act. Is that correct?
That they make modifications to it.
Okay.
Yes.
What's the tolerance, in your estimation, of our legislature for doing that?
Well, the fact is, is to get a Senate bill heard on the floor or in committee, well, not sure, in the floor, you have to have 19 Senate votes.
Right.
And I think the likelihood of getting any kind of change there is minimal, slim, but it, I mean, it could happen.
Okay. So not likely?
No, it's, it's not likely. I mean, and if it, if it did happen, if what we are advocating for happened this session, I mean, it wouldn't, wouldn't impact the revenue this, this session.
Right.
But it would, it could have a profound impact on future sessions.
So as we were discussing revenue streams, that's why I'm asking that question, because it could potentially have an impact in the future, if not in this session. So as we know, the state's budget in the past has plugged in a 7% growth, property value growth number as they budget. They plan for and expect property values to increase 7% per year at a minimum. What number are they plugging in this year?
Well, I mean, when the first biennium information was put together, and Commissioner Marath put together his budget for TEA, he was showing an overall reduction of what TEA was going to be spending on a statewide basis, and that was including, it was about 6.8%, you know, 6.9, you know, for the, for the two years. And so that's what was in that plan when he put together his budget for the biennium.
So he put, he planned for 6.8 property growth increase, 6.8%. So how do we have a 2.5% cap, but we're planning with 6.8% growth?
I, I mean, yeah, there's a
Okay, so I just wanted to point that out.
Those are not reconciled differences.
I know that. I mean, they're still planning at the 7% level, even though we have two bills going through both houses that say there's going to be a 2.5%, potentially a 2.5% cap. So their budget doesn't even match their legislation. I mean, true.
That is a true statement.
Yeah. So that's concerning. I don't know how, hopefully appropriations is paying attention to what the other, what's going on in, in the chambers and the other committees. Certainly, they're going to, they're going to have to pass a balanced budget, right? I mean, we hope, you would think. Are the action requests on slide 34 in the forecast on slide 33?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so those are, those include all the action requests that you guys are going to be making, including the
Right. Well, we don't, what we don't have in the, in the 1920 forecast, we do have the, the 2% raise, okay? That's just in our planning numbers, but we don't have additional adds on non-teaching positions.
So those are not included?
That, those are not, and then other, other compensation adjustments, you know, sometimes we'll do stuff with stipends and other, other things along those lines. This does include a 2%, general pay increase, though.
So we're looking at, at taking our fund balance down to 87 So we're looking at taking our fund balance down to 87 days, and we're not even really including the possibility of non-teaching positions or other compensation?
Well, I mean, this does have, so, I mean, it does have all of the positions up above. But in terms of expanding, say, in maintenance or finance or HR, you know, any of those, those are not included in here yet.
Okay. So we talked earlier quite a bit, as Mr. Rice said, about needing more teachers, more support. We want to expand early literacy because that's important for our kids. Where's all that?
Well, so the expansion of the Early Literacy Center is included in here for just the Ridgemont area. In terms of expanding it to other feeder patterns and stuff, which is something I think we all, you know, want to do, that is not included in here yet.
Okay. Makes it hard to do what's best for kids. So I'm, and I'm going to express concern that we're at the 87 days. I know Mr. Rosenthal is probably going to ask, talk a little bit about policy here, but we always try to stay at the 90-day mark.
Oh, sure.
So Steve, how are you going to find the extra money?
Well, we'll see what happens over the next couple of months. I mean, we just don't know. I mean, when I was asked, so when are we going to do, you know, general compensation? I mean, we do not know. I mean, I would not recommend any kind of salary increases, any kind of pay adjustments, until we have some clarity from Austin. And then once we have that, we'll see if it's good news or bad news.
Okay, the last thing I'll say is we brought to the legislature the last couple of sessions a list of unfunded mandates. These are things that the legislature passes and says that the school district has to do, but that they do not fund. And there, we have the last list, which was a conservative estimate, I think, is around $60 million. So one of the things that I've always advocated for, and I think anyone listening right now to this board meeting should be advocating for, is, number one, don't pass any more unfunded mandates. If the state can't fund it, then the school districts shouldn't have to comply with it because the money's got to come from somewhere. And number two is if we do roll back some of these regulations, it makes it a lot easier to do our jobs. So that's typically, you know, I'm often asked, "Do we need more money?" Well, not if you cut some of the regulations that you require us to comply with. And they may all be good things, but everything costs money. And when you're at 86% salaries and benefits, I mean, 86% goes to people. It doesn't leave a whole lot left to do some of the other things that we want to do. So it's a complex situation, so thank you for being on top of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosin and Mr. Rosenthal.
So real quick, so board policy states that we have to have a 90-day fund balance, correct?
Correct.
I think the state mandates 60 days, is that correct?
It's not a mandate. You have scoring in the first on how you are on that. And so there are definitely districts that are below that that haven't been shut down, for example, but they have lower scores.
Right. And so I know we've talked about this in the past, but having that fund balance at at least 90 days kind of helps us with our interest rates on issued debt, correct?
Absolutely. It makes a big difference on the ratings from the rating agency.
Right. So if, let's say it ended up at 80 or 85. How, I mean, I don't know if you can tell because it's hard to tell until you actually put, you know, bonds on the market. But, I mean, any kind of a ballpark number, how that would actually affect demand for our bonds?
If we were AA+. So for example, if we were downgraded from AA+ to AA, which is where most of the districts are around us, it'd probably cost us 10 basis points, 10 to 15 basis points on the future transactions that we have. And so that would have a ripple effect.
Right, exactly.
Put that much more pressure on the tax rate.
Exactly, that's where I was going, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett, for the presentation. I'd like to echo my team members' comments. It's hard to plan when you don't know what you're going, what all the unknowns are. So I appreciate your leading through us, leading through this for us. And I will look forward to some more information in the near future. I'm going to, we're going to go ahead and convene in closed session, and we're going to push the updates after closed session. I don't want any other, I don't need any hangry board members, so. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, and those sections listed in the agenda and for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subject matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.